Want to tell you about a few changes that are being made with our meetings. First off, I just want to let everyone know that due to the misconduct and the lack of respect being shown during the meetings, the meetings are going to be recorded from now on. So, just need you to note that, that they will be recorded. Once the meeting starts, if you have a question or comment for the council, please raise your hand and you'll be called upon. When you are called upon, please come to the front and address the council direct. And if you would, please remain at the front until the council has finished addressing your question. Any questions about the new procedures? No questions? Okay. Everyone bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the honor that you have bestowed upon us as the council to be able to make decisions for this community, dear Lord. We pray that you will lead, guide, and direct us in all the decisions that we make. And just be with us, dear Lord, and help us all to be kind and to work one another for the good of the community. We ask this in Jesus Christ heavenly name. Amen. Okay. What do you put in the works first? Call this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees of the Tallahassee Public Works Authority. Item number two, approve or reject the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the meeting held February 9th, 2015. Unless someone else has those minutes, the trainer is off set, she's on leave, and I think she forgot to prepare those before she left. I haven't been able to find them. So, we won't be able to locate those unless meeting. Item number three, approve or reject public works purchase orders. Jackie?
Uh huh. Me?
Donna?
Okay. I make a motion, approve.
For a motion and a second? Anyone discussion? Vote.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes.
Ronda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
And Jackie?
Yes. Item number four, public forum. Anyone here for the public forum? Okay. Item number five, attorney's report. Sean couldn't be here tonight. He did say we could reach you on my phone if you had any questions. Item number six, financial report.
Okay. January and February both have submitted to y'all by email in your boxes. February was a last minute submission, probably, you know, five dollars ago, it was out, so we got everything up today.
Well, we'll take just a minute and look at it, and then if we have a question, is that okay? Has anybody had time to look at it?
Not yet.
Do you want to look at that and just get back with her if you have questions? If we can be quiet during the meeting, please. Sorry.
So, am I to read this right, that we're 25,000 behind our budget?
So, Lenny, as you know, we didn't include one item in the budget for the prior period of time.
Can she come in here where I can hear her?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Can you come in here where we can hear you? Because I can't hardly hear you.
I didn't prepare a report for the council. I'm sorry, I didn't know we were starting that again. But, um, let me grab my reports out and I'll do my best.
That's okay. I think that we'll just move forward and...
Well, if we're going to ask the public to come forward, when they ask a question, we should be able to ask our employees to be able to address us.
You can, we're going to come back to that.
Okay.
Okay? Do you have any other questions other than that one?
Not right now, no.
Okay. Item number seven, approve or reject change of Barbara Johnson's utility account for her laundromat from commercial sewer billing rates to residential sewer billing rates? Barbara is here to address the council.
Will you come forward?
Please.
Please. Look at me?
Then you just come on.
Well, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at my bills. I'm assuming that it's my sewer rates that are causing my electric bill, I mean, my water bill to be so high, and I didn't know if there was anything you could do about it. I made a list starting back. I don't have but just two bills, because my others are the tax men. But this is an example. In July, my water bill total was 622. August, 492. September, 521. October, 474. November, 526. December, 646. January, 648. And starting now, February, 735. And this month, 953. So, it's just...
What has happened is, is you were being charged at residential sewer rate, and when they came in and they cleaned up the files that had some discrepancies in it, that was one of the things that was picked up. So, it started charging you for a commercial.
Started at a certain time, just kept getting higher.
Yes. And... Yeah, that's the reason it's going up is because it's based on usage. But the reason it went up originally is because of the correction in the books where they started charging you for commercial. And I think that's what your question for the council is, is if you will let them charge you, if you will allow them to go back and charge you residential line.
Yes, if there's any way. I mean, it's wash water. It's not like toxic waste. I don't know, you know, what it could... And I'm assuming that the laundry does about the same every month. I don't know if it's the way they read the meter at different times.
At different times in the month, probably.
Maybe because it was like 20,000 more gallons this time on their last bill. And, I mean, unless it's because of the way they're reading the meter, it shouldn't be that, because it does about the same every week, about the same peak we use it. So, but it's just getting higher and higher, and it's actually higher than all my other bills combined. The water bill's higher than my gas, electric, phone, internet.
It's a major component of your business, though. I mean, the number of water you're using.
Well, it is. Yeah, it is. It is. But now, the gas, the dryers are gas, and the boilers are gas, and, you know, when it's all of the others combined are less than the water, it's kind of, it's all.
Dale?
Yes.
Do you mind if I put you on the spot for a moment?
Sure.
Please. She made the comment that it was just wash water, and I know you know a lot about the type of components that would go into the sewer system from a laundromat. Is that, in your opinion, is there a lot of things in the soap and things like that that would cause it harder for us to treat on our end?
It might make it a little bit harder to treat because of the soap, but there's something in the water called BOD is really what you're trying to break down. And the soap water would have less BOD in it than what a regular, same quantity of regular sewer would have, if that makes sense. Does that make sense?
Oh. So, basically, what you're saying is it causes a small difference, but not a large difference, right?
It's still volume. It's volume going into our system.
It's still volume.
It's a volume problem instead of what the product is.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Does the council have an opinion on...
Well, I never, my opinion, and I always fought against it until we got to the point where the grant said we had to do the commercial rate. I don't think that a commercial person should have to pay more than a residential person because it's the same volume. I mean, there's nothing that she's doing at home that's different from what she's doing in her laundromat. However, we were told that we had to charge commercial rates, or we weren't going to get a lot of our grants that we were doing. So, at that point, Barbara, I mean, I'd love to save you money, but I can't see charging you residential and not charging the next business residential. And we're not to a point where we can go back and charge everybody the same rate. I wish we were. It'd help us all, because we need our businesses to make the money in Tallahassee and provide the services. I understand that. I'm right where you are.
Yeah.
But to go back and say, okay, I'm going to give you residential rate, and then we've got this business, her person's going to stand up, and she's going to say, I want residential sewer rates too. And that's just not justified.
I see. But my only alternative is to go up.
Right.
You know, I have to break in, I have to pay my bills.
That's how a business goes. When our cost goes up, we have to.
The people that use the laundry are the ones that typically have, you know...
And that's basically what's happened to the town and their reasons, is we were actually not collecting enough money to even treat the water or the sewer, so we had to start going up. And also, she mentioned grants. We also have some loans, and the people we have the loans through, they actually come in and they calibrate things and look at things, and they tell us, this is where you need to be in order to be able to pay this. We're not...
How many times they're giving us three options, and we're picking the lowest and going up a little bit more.
Yeah, we're not even close to where they want us to be.
Really?
But we have started at the bottom and begged for mercy and a little bit of time to get us to where we need. But what happened was, is for a number of years, I don't know how many years, possibly 15 to 20 years, there was no increases. And so, we started really having to have some pretty sizable increases. I think if we'd done it, been able to do it a little at a time, you wouldn't be feeling that crunch like you are now.
Depending on the amount of water that you use, as your volume goes up, does the rate get higher then, or is it a flat rate no matter how much you use?
Mary, can you hear...
It's an actual rate.
Okay. It does go up, the more you...
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate you all considering it.
Well, thank you for asking.
Thank you for having a nice facility in town.
Yeah.
I really appreciate your facility.
Beautiful. That is something that I think the council can continue to look at as things get better and maybe at some point be able to cut that some of it. Thanks, Barbara. Item number eight, discussion action regarding the water distribution line to Albion Row Water District. Does anyone here from Albion Row Water District? Dale, did you get anything from them?
No, not from Albion, but I do have some information for the council, if they'd like to hear it, even though there's nobody here from Albion.
Sure. Sure. That's great. You might want to just bring the council up to date to kind of what's going on.
Back in November the 5th, we sent, if you guys remember, we had a change order to add master meters to everybody's line that could be hooked up to our control system that we have at the plant, the SCADA system itself. And it was going to help us operate the plant more, you know, optimally, I guess is the right word.
Barbara.
Okay? And help us track things. If somebody had a lead, you know, you'd be able to see it right on your screen and everything. We sent out a letter November the 5th to all the districts and said, hey, guys, you know, this is what we're planning to do. If you have a problem with it, please let us know. Nobody got back with us except for Ben, Ben Gawn. We've had a meeting with Ben Gawn, we, you know, worked some things out with him. The contractor was out there to change out the meter about two weeks ago, maybe three now, and the operator basically stopped us. And I didn't want to get into their system and everything else, I wanted to try to work it out. Okay? And his issue was that the meter looked like it was a smaller meter than what we were putting in. Okay? The one on the front page there is the meter that they have installed. That's their current meter. And this data, I think, is their meter. Their meter is so old, I really couldn't run it down, but this is, I mean, the site itself says old since its day. So, that's the meter that's out there. If you turn the page two back, that's the new meter that's going in. Okay? And as you can see, it does look like it is an actually smaller meter than what this one does. But what you don't realize is the internals of the second meter is a lot more improved than the older model. Okay? I'm going to get you to go back to the second page now. And how we look at it on engineering is what we call head loss through the meter itself. And the graph right here, okay, top left, left-hand corner, that basically defines when the water's going through at a certain rate, how much pressure loss is through that meter itself. And as you can see, their existing meter there is right around 1.2 PSI at 240 gallons a minute. Okay? Everybody follow me so far? You go to the fourth, fifth page of the meter that we were proposing, it's actually the sixth page. There's a graph here, okay? And basically, at the same flow rate, even though the meter looks a lot smaller, it's a pressure loss of 1.8. So, we're talking about, you know, a half a pound is the difference going between the two meters. Okay? And that was basically the issue. He said, you know, hey, it don't look like that I'm going to get a lot more loss through here, my pumps ain't going to pump as much, and everything else. Okay?
So, you're telling us that half a pound pressure is not significant?
I'm telling you that, yes.
Okay.
Half a pound isn't as significant when you're talking about pumps that pump out, you know, 70 and 80 PSI. One thing that the operator did tell me is if the council would be interested, that they feel like that everything could get resolved if we would allow them to connect to our generator that we have up.
Right. Okay.
I said, okay. I said, we looked at that once before, okay? And I said, I'll go look at it again. And I think the answer before was it'd probably be cheaper than to go in and put all this equipment in, it'd probably be cheaper to just buy your own generator and put it on site. RP Power is the people that provide in the generator that we have on the water plant itself. And as you can see, the cost it is to, for us to hook them up to our generator would basically cost $31,670. And the problem with that is our automatic transfer switch is what they call a three-pole switch, and that is the neutral would be the same, and per code, you can't have the same neutral for two different services out there. Okay? So, you have to take that transfer switch out and put a four-pole switch in there, and that's really where the cost is. Okay? I said, okay, that's a lot of money. I don't know if anybody can afford that. So, I said, what would it cost for them to just put their own generator in and not piggyback off of ours? And as you can see, it's $27,980. And that's pretty much what my electrical engineer told us way back when we looked at this the first time.
So, they are wanting us to put this bill, is that what you were getting from them?
They're supposed to be here to... Okay? Now, there is one more meter on the meter deal that I gave you, okay? And it's a very large commercial meter. It's back there on the very back. I think it's the last two pages. If it looks is the reason that we needed to change it out, there is another meter that does look like a big six-inch meter would look like if you look back right here on the back page. Okay? The problem is, that's another $700, $800 more for this one than the one we previously approved.
And it has a set capacity.
It's the same. Now, the friction loss through this meter is basically zero because it is so big. Okay? But, you know, that's where we stand. Okay? You know, I haven't had a chance to... I'll call...
I think what their problem is, is they haven't had a meeting yet, and I think a few are just kind of thinking out loud things they'd like to accomplish, but still they have a meeting, they don't know for sure. So, what I've asked them to do is, once they have their meeting, to submit something to the council in writing, asking exactly what their request is and what the details are.
What I'd like to do is give this info information to them.
That sounds great. That sounds great.
I'll go ahead and...
I'm sure we'll be hearing back...
PGF it and send it to them, so they'll have the information. I'm sure they still don't realize how expensive it is to hook up our generator.
I don't think they do, again. Hopefully, we'll have that resolved soon, though, so we can move forward and finish up.
We need to move forward. That's about the only thing left on the water transfer plant.
We can let that be and hold this up.
We have some issues out there, handles out there today to look at it. And while we're talking about the water plant, I did, we get with Phillip, and we looked at the chemicals that we were putting in the plant, and we increased the dosage of the quagulin. We were letting that run for a couple of weeks. Phillip's right here. He says he's got, you going to get those tests next week?
We'll have them by the end of the week.
We'll probably have the test results by the end of the week to know how that increase in quagulin actually did. If that does not take, then we either got to increase the quagulin a little more or just change it. And that's what I was telling you before, we might have to change what quagulin we're actually using. Get the TLC stuff.
And Billy hadn't hollered back at you on our conversation.
He did. He, uh, there's an issue with the electrician saying that he's not being paid. Billy looked it up, and the only thing he saw now, the electrician right now is retained.
So, there was, how much retained percentage-wise?
He's actually, he actually told me he was the only old electrician, about $12,000.
Really?
Yeah.
An electrician told me $26,000.
26 would be 10%. 11's right around 5.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think we're holding 5% on theirs.
So, there's a discrepancy somewhere.
So, he said that he hadn't been contacted by them at all.
Okay.
I said, talk to them, let me know if there's an issue. If there's, I'll let the council know.
Yep. We need to get that straightened out.
Absolutely, we do.
Well, Dale, if you'll work on those things and get back to us as soon as you can, that would be great.
I'll do it.
Now, we thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Item number nine, discussion action regarding allowing Valley Septic to discharge septic waste into the wastewater lagoons of the Tallahassee Public Works Authority. Anyone here from Valley Septic? No action on item number nine. Item number 10, discussion action regarding the water pump station adjacent to Belvin House. Mrs. Spencer? I didn't know that was going to be that one. So, and now...
I went out there and looked at it.
Did you?
Yep. And it needs some fencing. Do we know for a fact that that's ours?
You would have to ask Keith those questions.
Keith? You back there, partner?
What was the question?
On the pump house at Belvin?
Mm-hmm.
Is that actually ours?
I couldn't say for sure, Donna. I mean, that one time, I know it belonged to the Choptaws.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was any kind of formal type of work that took place when we took that over, or not. I'm not sure.
The reason I ask is, when I went out there, I saw the Choptaw, Chickasaw, Sanitarium everywhere.
It was a register.
So, maybe we need to do some research before we actually spend any money doing anything on it.
I think that's why Gina didn't have it back on the agenda. We just got it put back on there by mistake. So, we definitely do need to do some research on that. Donna, will you be doing that research?
I can find out, yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Item number 10, discussion action regarding the water pump station that, now, that's what we just did, sorry. Item number 11, discussion action regarding the water pump station at the Old Lake. Did you see that?
Yeah, look at that one. That one, all we need to do is get some plywood on the doors and the windows, basically, some OSB or something.
Make it safer.
Yep.
And you're just going to get with the maintenance department?
Yeah, we can do that. They said it won't take too much there.
Okay. Sounds great.
Do we need to vote on that?
No. Not unless it's going to...
It's not going to be over $500 to... Keith? You still there? Not over $500 to get plywood to block off the old lake house. Can you go, guys, take care of that, your first availability, please?
We can vote on that. We can vote about it, whatever you want to do.
The boards will take care of it, I know they want...
Okay. Item number 12, approve or reject the addition of security lights to the water treatment plant.
We get a little bit more research on this. Phillip called PSO back, and they will not be charging us, right, Phillip, for the installation?
What they explained was they will...
Charge.
Need to install the pole and the light, and the only thing that they'll start charging us for is for the monthly fees.
So, we thought it was going to be $500 to $900 to install these light poles. It's not. They have the different wattages of the lights, starting at 100 watt, 150 watt, 250 watt, and 450 watt. 450 watt light is $10.78 a month. So, if we went ahead with the three lights that's been suggested that we need out there, that's just another $31 a month.
Yeah, that's fair.
Dale's actually going to look to see if that wattage is the one that we need, if we could go lower, but if we could go ahead and prove it as the largest wattage, and then if he finds out that we don't need that much, we could always drop it down and we'd cover it, and I'd have to bring it back on the agenda.
What I also found out was the type of lights that are like the 100 watt, the kind we've got out for right now, or the kind that you find in your own backyard or going up and down the streets of Tallahassee, that's your 100 watt. They're not real bright.
Well, for no more than what it's going to cost you, I think you might as well go to the...
I mean, this, we need to have high security out there.
Oh, yeah.
The more light we can have, the more secure it's going to be.
So, if we can have the form of a motion...
We had either three or four locations. What would you feel comfortable doing?
The three or four locations?
Yeah, that was what was suggested. We didn't put it either at three locations.
And you were talking about the backyard.
Did you, you made that suggestion, three locations?
The gate, the backyard, and then around the fences.
I'd say the three, if that's what...
Let's try the three. Okay. I make a motion.
If you think you need four, you'll always come out and put the four.
Put the four, then. Let's try the three, then. I make a motion to have three 400 watt light poles installed at the water plant.
What was the difference between the 250 and the 450?
250 was at 686, and the 400 was at 1078.
250 is a bunch.
A second one.
If it's metal halide.
It's not.
Yeah, those will be metal halides, probably. They're the bigger ones.
No, I had some for halides, and these weren't halides. These are just your sodium vapor.
Let's go ahead with our motion, and then discussion, we have a motion and a second by Gina. Any more discussion?
Well, I'd like to know what lights we're getting.
Well, the motion is...
100 watt.
For the 400 watts.
At three.
What I'm saying, that's a lot, a lot of light.
Is that what we want?
Well, I've got, I've got 150s, 175s, and they will light up a 100-foot area.
I think that's the whole pump to light it up.
Well, I know that.
What do you think, Dale?
Me and Rhonda talked about it, and basically, what I asked her to do is, if we go ahead and get the 400 approved, I'm going to go back and I know what wattage we're talking about, and I'll talk to my electrical engineer, and if, you know, if 250s will work, I'll let Rhonda know the 250.
I think Rhonda will need to change the way she made her motion, if that's the case, because if you make a motion for the 400 watt, that's what you're going to do. So, would you like to rescind that motion?
Rescind the motion. Start, Donna? Make a motion to approve three pole lights for the water plant with a monthly cost per light not to exceed $10.78.
Very good. Okay, my other motion. Gina, second of that. Any more discussion?
Wait a minute, monthly cost of what? A monthly cost per light of 1078.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
That'd be great. Any more discussion? Vote.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes. Ronda? Yes. Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Item number 13, discussion action regarding the purchase of a new wastewater pump.
We are operating on one pump currently. This is the waste pump that services the Vader Center. This has been a problem area with the amount of grease and things coming in. Keith feels a little bit uncomfortable running that, it's the only pump that we have right now, and knows that we are at least 60 days out on billing. The, Keith, I'm sorry, I don't remember, I didn't bring my cost with that. Around $6,500.
6,500. And it actually is a pump, not a pump, but a pump motor.
Right. And this is new and not rebuilt?
Correct. The ones that are out there, we've had rebuilt several times, and we just hate to be down to one pump while we're having one in the shop, having it rebuilt, so...
But by several times, you mean many times, correct?
Yes. Yes. So, we were thinking if we get a new one, we can install that one, and then the one we take out, have it rebuilt, then we would have a spare. But it is a motor, not a pump.
Did we, did we get some different places on that, from different places, or...
Basically, I just asked Evans Electric, Fort Smith to give us a quote, and you have to be a distributor if you ask for a GE, and I'm not sure. I'm sure we could research and find another one, but that's just from Evans Electric out of there.
6,500, basically.
Well, we need to actually go out for bid.
Well...
We need to vote to go out for bid and have specs on what we want. So, you need to let us know exactly what you want, and then we need to go out for bid and see who gives us the best price.
I think he already has those specs, and he's already finding that out.
They have, they have...
We want him to bring it back to the council again.
Yeah.
So, Rhonda, how do you feel about waiting?
And if the motor goes out?
Well, if it went out last month, we'll do what we've been doing. And where's it going to come out of the budget?
It can come out of our contingency money that we have set aside for repairs each month. However, we do know that we may have to wait a little bit on that, because Mary has some larger expenses that she has to get in.
So, I mean, I'd rather us get bids and see where we're at on it, especially at that price.
This is somebody you've used for a long time, correct?
Yes, we will be looking at about eight weeks, even after we replace the order to get the pump also, so we're looking a little further down the road. You know, it's something, if we have a problem out there, we're just going to have to rebuild another one that's out there running now. And it's about 2,500 to do that, but that's what we're looking at.
We can go out for bids on this, but understand that if this pump goes out, we need to use our emergency contingency here and just go ahead like we've had to do in the past. and just go ahead like we've had to do in the past, and not, not hit bids on it.
But it'd be an emergency then. But it'd be an emergency then.
That's what we should probably do, is just go ahead and, and let's get a couple of bids on, if it does go out, it becomes an emergency, then use the contingency money then, when it becomes an emergency. Yeah.
And then when we do that, it's gonna be after hours and, and more expensive.
That's part of it.
So, that's true.
Explain to me, because I, I really don't, um, is it just a, is there something special about it, or is there, is it just?
No.
That's how it's packaged, that's how it comes, or do we have to?
I was real surprised that a new one came to that much, but I guess that's just, I don't know, Adele could probably answer, that's like a ten horsepower.
With smirps or, or bug ram?
It's a bu, it's a bug ram, and I don't know if that's, uh, something typical as far as price goes, I was surprised it was that expensive for a new one. But they did tell me that those pump motors have been redesigned, and I'm assuming might be some different stuff there.
That's why I was wondering about the bids, exactly what kind of specs is it going to be different than it, if it's in the past?
I don't know anything different about it, I mean, the only thing I can give them would be the information off the existing motor that we have. And that's basically what they went, and, and they just, it is a general electric motor, and they gave us a quote for what would take the place of the one we have now, but it's totally redesigned and different than what we have, but, you know, the internal working parts, I guess, will be the same, basically.
Let me ask you this, when was that pump put in originally, that system put in?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. What was the discharge from the Veteran Center in eighty-four compared to now? Are, are we pumping actually more waste, is it wastewater pump?
Uh, I don't know, Donnie, I, I couldn't say.
The reason I'm asking that, do we need a bigger pump?
Well, you know, uh.
I think when we're out of this, the council needs to decide, do we wanna wait, or do we wanna do it now? And we can, we can discuss all this other information later. I mean, do, does the council want to wait and, and get some bids, and if it does become an emergency, go ahead and make that purchase, even though it may cost us more money, or does the council want to make a motion to purchase that?
Well, really, at that price, I think we have to go out for bid. I mean, I do, and my.
So, so the council, so, so pretty much, that's what we're gonna do, is go out for bids on it. So Keith, if you can get us some bids on it, get it back as soon as we can, then.
We, we, we probably need that in a motion, though, uh, to go out for bids for, on the, on the existing, on the existing motor specs. But if we find out that we've been pumping, say, a million gallons a month through it in, in eighty-four, and now we're one and a half million, we may need a bigger pump, and, and we would probably reject all bids at that point and go back.
Somebody else do it.
Do, do you have an issue with pumping when it doesn't run now? Does it seem to be off, or excuse me for talking, guys?
You know, really, of course, Adele, we, we need to look into something long-term out there, and as far as redesigning that whole system, but, uh, as far as the water or pumping, I don't know that it's any more water, but it's, but there, there are definitely issues out there that we need to look into. Design, eye on eye, grease, debris.
We're gonna wait until item fifteen to make that motion?
Would it be something that you could figure out real quickly on, if we need to go up on a larger?
Yeah, me, me and Keith will get together if that's okay with, with the council.
And we'll read the motion general until we find out.
We'll, we'll, we'll get with Keith, and we'll see what kind of issues we actually got out there, and maybe we can drive up there and look at it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we're no action right now on?
No, action on thirteen, we're gonna do it under item fifteen for new business. So item number twelve, discussion action regarding sewer problems on Forest Street.
I brought that up, 'cause a couple of individuals came to me a little bit frustrated that they'd been, had been being charged for sewer for years and years, and come to find out they're on a septic system.
Would that be Clyde Dean Blackwell?
Her, and I think Ruby's next door, and I think Rodney, I think you gotta, I know, but you haven't said anything, but I think you've got a house right there adjacent to it.
Yeah.
Um, a, and, uh, I think it's kinda ridiculous.
Mrs. Blackwell, uh, we've talked to her, that's how it was first brought to our attention. She had a problem with her septic tank, no one knew she was on a septic.
Right.
So, what she, what the, she had asked the city to do was, if the city were gonna get some new sewer lines before July possibly, on a rate grant that we have coming in, and it's gonna cover that area, she was willing to wait until we get those new sewer lines, and we're gonna set her a tap, and we are not charging her for any sewer now.
No, but she's been.
We have not been charging her.
But she had been charged for thirteen years.
Yes, but she said that she was in agreement, it was her suggestion.
Well, I'm, I'm sitting there saying, if we're gonna do what's right for people, we need to sit there and look at this situation.
Was she, that's just what she.
And I've talked to her, and it's not right for her to have paid for thirteen years of sewer, and we reimburse her, tell her she didn't have to pay for six months or eight months, number one. Number two, we're telling her she has to hook up her own new sewer line, which is gonna cost her more money, and, and plus, she's been paying for thirteen years on sewer.
But she didn't realize that she was being paid for sewer when she was on a septic? I mean, that's her own responsibility.
No, it's not necessarily her responsibility.
I mean, you should know what your bills are.
I mean, if you move into a house, you're on, and you're in town, you're assuming that, and you're getting a sewer bill.
Yes.
You assume you're on city sewer.
And I agree.
And she had sewer problems, and this plumber came out, and Keith, I think, went up and looked at it, and they found out she was on a septic. Okay, and, and if you take it and average out, she's getting paid, well, sewer now is what, twenty-five in town? Let's say it's average fifteen, she's paid over three thousand dollars in sewer that she didn't have.
Why would she come to you?
She didn't come to me.
Something totally different than she.
She didn't come to me, I went to her because the plumber came to me.
But she came to me, and she asked for this arrangement.
And.
And we said, if that's.
Well, and I think, and I think she's reevaluating and saying, wait a minute.
I just talked to her, uh, last Friday, and she didn't mention it. But if she would like to reevaluate, have her come.
I, I think we need to address this, and I think we need to look at either reimbursing her all she's paid in the thirteen years, or when you put in the sewer line, that we go ahead and put in, tie her in.
I think what we need to do is let her come and rest in the council.
Keith? Keith, are you back here?
Mm-hmm.
There's probably some other houses up there that probably aren't hooked onto the sewer.
There could be.
And so we need to.
How do you suggest we find that out?
Did you do a smoke test any time on any of those to see?
No, not very many.
So we, we probably could do a, a smoke test and see if they're tied on that way. But the thing is, is we need to address that, because if you really look at it, if we have five, four or five people that aren't tied on the sewer, and they've been paying sewer, we've got a ten or fifteen thousand dollar judgment against us.
Well, if they, I don't know.
If that's a septic system, or they hadn't been maintained that many years, they would be having bigger problems.
Well, I can't, I can't speak for the septic system, I can only speak for the fact they've been paying for sewer that they're not getting.
Donnie, can you get with these people that you know of and ask them to, if they want to do something different than what they've already requested, come back to the council?
Right, I think we need to sit down and look at this and do what's right for the citizens that have been paying all these years.
We, we were just doing what she asked us to do, and that was what she had asked us to do, so. If you can tell her if she wants to change that request, I talked to her on Friday, and she never mentioned anything else, and she said she was totally satisfied with the arrangements that she had asked for. So if it's different than that, we need to hear from her, so that she can let us know. So, I didn't never, but I do agree that we, uh, we do need to, and whatever we do for one.
You have to do it for all of them.
But she is not paying sewer rates now, when it was brought to our attention in May, we're not, we're not charging her sewer rates back to May, 'til she gets back. So item number fifteen, new business, and that's where we're gonna have our motion.
Make a motion to go out for bids for a new motor for the wastewater pump?
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any more discussion?
Why would it be under new business rather than the actual?
Because it says regarding the purchase of a new wastewater pump, not going out for bids. So we have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Donnie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
You got it.
Yes.
That's how funds are raised, is to do it in the past, when it wasn't.
I have one question, can somebody tell me where we're at on hiring the public works, as far as?
Donna and I and Keith have looked at the applicants, and Keith feels like he would like to postpone that at this time, didn't feel like there was anybody that fit what he needed at this time.
So, um, we have really three positions right now that aren't being worked by someone, I mean. Hey, did we go out for new, did, did we extend it?
We can put it on the next agenda or do a special meeting.
Well, I just wondered if we advertised more, is that what you're saying, you were advertising for more?
Keith, what, Keith had some inquiries, Keith had some inquiries out there in the profession, and he was looking to see if he could find some people to come in to.
So we're just trying to acquire more applicants, it's not that we're not interested in who has applied, we're just trying to get more, because there's not many. You know, we may, may just have to fill one of the positions, or.
Well, I'm only interested in filling one position.
Are you only interested in filling one?
Yeah, we have a question. I don't.
Could you stand up and come up here?
Yes, ma'am.
Please, ma'am. No, ma'am, please come up here.
I was just inquiring about what positions those were.
Uh, it's actually for a position in the Public Works Department.
Um.
Maintenance.
Maintenance.
Street and alley Public Works.
Okay, and are you guys going to put that in the paper?
It has been, it has been in the paper for a couple of years.
Uh, what is your name?
Crystal.
Crystal.
Simmons. You don't call for any interviews.
Can you come up here if you're gonna ask a question? I'm sorry, interview.
Did any interviews work?
We did not call for any interviews at this time.
So how do you know if anybody would actually fit the job?
You're looking at their, the applications, what they filled in, what their work experience was, what, um, they listed as their skills on the job.
I don't really know, so I'll tell you me.
No, but if they, I mean, you wouldn't hire somebody who's never cooked.
No, but if they got like, you know, like a run back home, have experience.
We're, we're hoping to interview every applicant that we get.
What is your name?
I'm Samantha.
Samantha Frazier.
Thanks, Samantha. We're hoping to interview.
I know. I know there are any applicants, everybody's welcome to come in and apply.
Any other questions? Okay. Item number sixteen.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Don?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
We're gonna call this meeting to order for the board of trustees of the town of Tallahena. Item number two, approve reject consent agenda consisting of the minutes in the meeting held January ninth, two thousand and fifteen. Again, we do not have those minutes to approve. Item number three, approve reject general fund purchase orders. I make a motion. We have a motion? Second of the motion.
I'll say.
Any more discussion? Vote.
Donnie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Have stayed.
Uh, Gina?
Yes.
And Jackie?
Yes.
Item number four, public forum for the town, anyone here for the public forum for the town? Yes, CJ.
Uh, I, uh, checked on state law, section eight, dash one fourteen, which says that all municipal officials have to take a training class through the Oklahoma Municipal League, and I did check with them, and they have no record of Ms. Donna.
No, I haven't yet.
I remember. And the law says that you have to do it within the first year. And then, it also says that the meeting, first meeting after the first year, that has to be reviewed, and if she hasn't done it, then you gotta take action.
She had, you had tried to get that training, and it had to be postponed, they postponed it for some reason, and then they haven't gotten back to you.
Yeah. I'm scheduled for the next one, which is, I think, in April or either June, I can't remember.
I know, they, they postponed the one that she, she was scheduled, and they postponed it, so they would get back to her, so.
Well, someone asked at the last meeting, she said she had already taken it.
No, I didn't say that. No, I didn't.
Okay, anyone else for the public forum?
I have a. No, I said you have a.
Oh, who's up?
My name is Lawrence Ross, I'm the present commander for the VFW. VFW's closing permanently. We're gonna merge with Weberton, and you had a, uh.
It's, it's the next agenda, I am actually, Larry.
Huh?
It's the next agenda, item actually.
It's the next agenda, okay, I just want you to let you know that. Quick, quick.
Okay, I'm sorry to hear that.
Well, it's all.
Okay, well, we might talk about that more with the next agenda item. Um, item number six, we have those financials and.
We don't have any financials.
On the town?
Yeah, I've got some questions.
We have some financials for the town.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, we didn't go back to that a while ago on.
Well, it doesn't matter, it's, the, the point, the point can be taken on it. Um, when I look at the town of Tallahena, and when I look at it, we're, uh, I got two Public Works. I'm finding that, uh, we're fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars behind in our budget.
Boy, that's gone down, hasn't it?
No, it was thirty thousand in November, it's gone up.
Why did it go down?
No, November was thirty thousand, and we're fifty-eight, fifty-six thousand.
Oh, for the town, yeah, the town, sorry, I was looking for.
Fifty-six thousand now, so we're, we're going in the hole, ten thousand a month.
We gotta figure out what we can do to.
But sales taxes are up, can, we, if you look at just the sales tax line, um, we are ten thousand dollars above.
Well, there's not anything in the town that you can cut?
There's all kinds of things we can cut.
Well, we need to get back to the council and let us know what that is, because we've cut everything that we can possibly cut, other than the necessities that, and that.
Well, my point is, you can't keep spending and going in the hole. Um, there comes a point.
But I don't think it's spending any unnecessary money.
Well, it doesn't matter if it's unnecessary or not, we have to make hard choices.
So.
And decide what we have to cut, 'cause we're gonna end up breaking the Oklahoma Municipal Budget Act, and we're all gonna be in trouble. Uh, you can't, you can't spend more than ninety percent of your budget, of the money. Um, in reality, when you do it, when we do our budget, and let's, I'm just gonna throw this out as an example, let's say it's a million-dollar budget. We're only gonna budget nine hundred thousand, so we should have a carryover of a hundred thousand dollars at the end of the fiscal year. So what I'm assuming we're doing, since we're actually spending more money than we're bringing in, is we're actually using our carryover money now. You know, and, and we can't do that. Um, we have, we have to stay within the perimeters of the state law.
What you might wanna do is keep with Mary and ask her those questions.
I'd like another council member to sit with me, and, and we can go together.
I'll sit with you.
And, and we can try to figure out how we can get this back, get on track.
Kinda like me calling you, Donnie, four or five times, and asking for us to sit down and talk about this, but we're not ready to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Let's sit down and talk about it.
We've, we've got to address this.
Let's sit down and talk about it and see what we can do.
And, and the reason I brought it up, Public Works, 'cause we're twenty-six thousand, twenty-five thousand behind in Public Works. So we're seventy-five thousand, almost eighty thousand dollars behind in our budget.
I think it needs a couple of people to sit down and talk about that, see what we need to do, and if there's things that we have to cut, then bring it back to the council.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions.
So as soon as you can sit down and visit with me about that, and with Mary, I'll be going to.
Okay.
'Cause we definitely need to get within our budget. So anything else for a financial? Okay, item number seven, discussion action regarding property easements adjacent to Lawrence Street. Donnie, I think that's done.
Yeah, I brought that back up, and to see what the council's wishes were. Larry just mentioned that, uh, the VFW actually shut down. Uh, I was trying to do a little bit of research to figure out if we actually did it properly in the first place, and I still haven't determined if we actually did it properly in the first place, Larry. Um, we probably need to readdress it, and, and, and probably get, uh.
Yeah, Sean.
Sean, I was trying to say Kevin for some reason, Kelvin, um, to look at, 'cause it almost, it almost has to be vacated through the county, since it's already platted. 'Cause it almost, it almost has to be vacated through the county since it's already platted. What I was reading was, we can't just arbitrarily take it off the plat. The county has to take it off the plat because it's been filed with the county as, as, as a plat.
So you're wanting to go back and rescind your motion, getting that too?
Well, we prob, it's whatever the wishes of the council is. We need to readdress it and, and either rescind it and, and look at it again.
Well, the council done it upon the discretion that you had checked into that. So if you wanna, you know, if you wanted to go back.
Clarify, are we talking about the extra land that we gave them for our parking lot, basically?
Right, they said we're vacating a, a platted street that's not in public use.
Now, where the original lodge is, what is happening with that land? Was that originally city land that we gave to them years ago? I don't know.
No, no.
Are you selling that building?
Yes, we sold the building and, uh, everything's being sold out of it or given to Weberton.
So you did sell the building?
Yes, we did.
Now, when you, we gave you that piece of property, wasn't it on the stipulation that you would never sell? Because I asked you that question and you said, no, we're not selling, we'll never sell.
No.
That that was just rumors that had been circulated?
Yeah, they were at that time, yes. And, um.
But you didn't say, you didn't sell the land that we just gave you.
Without getting into.
No, they don't have title.
Uh, a couple of the individual members decided to go ahead and sell the building. And, uh, I don't know if you know anything about military organizations. The commander really doesn't have a lot of power. It's the members who have the power. So there was no way I could stop it. So they went ahead and decided to go ahead and sell the building and had it sold before they even told me.
So in your opinion, it was not ever gonna be sold?
In my opinion, it was never gonna be sold. But they went ahead and did it without.
Did they send you to the council to speak in their behalf?
Yes. But see, they didn't give me all the information.
Donnie, I don't know what can be done about it since the property's been sold, but.
Well, I mean, the, the, the street hasn't been sold. We, we never have deeded it.
Oh, we haven't deeded it?
No.
It sounds to me as if we need to rescind the motion and take back ownership of that land.
Well, we, we have, it's not taking back ownership. We still have ownership of it. It never has been deeded. Uh, so we probably need to make.
In our motion, we need to go back and look and see because I think that was a stipulation in the motion, as I recall, that you had, did you think that's the way it was? We need to look at it.
We need to look at it, but I just wanted to bring that up, that we probably don't need to do any action until we research and we probably didn't do it properly the first time. Uh, from what I'm, from what little bit I've been able to read. Uh, so we probably need to readdress this and, and actually talk with Sean and see how we need to.
Probably didn't do anything like.
Yeah, no action right now.
Sean was here that night.
If the county, if they wanted to own it, then the new owners could take it to the county.
The county doesn't own it. City owns it.
City owns it.
Remember what month that was, Larry?
No, you put me off for many months, I don't remember what month it was.
Donnie, find out, uh, if you would, and from Sean, find out what we need to do to see about taking that easement back.
And still, it's not taking it back. 'Cause we still, it's still ours. We haven't even deeded it.
Well, but, you know what I mean. See, see, like rescinding your motion and doing something else. You know, we've already made the motion to do it, we just haven't done it yet. So basically, it's, still stands unless we go back in on it.
Right, figure out what we gotta do to straighten it all out.
Anything else on that, Donnie?
Not that I know of.
Larry, you got any, can you else on it? No?
No.
Okay. Item number eight, discussion action regarding signing the quitclaim deed for the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the property on Rainbow Street. Think everybody has their quitclaim deed, everybody has their surveys. Before it's filed, we need to check that legal description and make sure it's right. I did talk to Sean. Sean does have a copy of the deed. He did not have a copy of the survey. That's why he said to make sure that we get that legal right. He's totally fine with the town signing that.
The only question that I had, 'cause I went and looked at the markings on the survey and I don't think they put them in the wrong place and I think we're all right with the survey. And I'm all right with the deal. I just didn't know if we needed to add in the deal. Uh, I don't have my copy with me, but it says, uh, subject to that the event, the party of the second, the state, the state bans it that, uh, uh, the land falls to continue public ownership. So that highway goes back to the city of first part. Uh, free and clear of any claims of the party of the second part. Uh, in the, restored to a condition equal to or better than its condition when conveyed to the party of the first part. Okay, now, that just means they have to give it back to us like it is right now.
Jason.
And if they put a building on it and stuff, and we were told that if they put a new building, it goes with us, that's not what that says. So we'd have to say that and any, any, any improvements from this point forward.
I thought, can I see that one?
Yeah, I have two copies.
Ashley called me and said that Jason, I talked to you, you guys had this all hatched out before this meeting.
Well, I, I told him I was in agreement of doing the quitclaim deed, but that's the only question that I had concerns with, that it probably ought to. And we can, we can go ahead and vote to do, put it in there and vote that it's, that says that in there. And they would have to reject it.
I think that would be a good thing.
And, but it needs to say, and any improvements from this point forward. Because if you don't, they can take down everything they do from this point forward.
Do you like to make a motion and include that in your motion, please?
I have a.
Yes.
Uh, question about where it says public ownership and use of said tracks. We probably ought to define how that is used because if they move out in six, eight, ten years, they could store a vehicle that wasn't even working and they could say that they were using it. And it wouldn't revert back to us at that time.
I didn't even think something like that. I wouldn't think they would do that.
Well, I wouldn't think they would, but.
They, uh, made it quite clear that whatever improvements they did to that land, if they were moved off of it, we got everything.
When I sent it to Sean, that was one of my main questions. I emailed and I told him, this is our main concern. Once they vacate that property, we wanna make sure it goes back to us with no glitches in that. And he read it and he said, the way that have it is perfectly legal and he has no problems with the way that it's written. But I see what you're saying, but what would you wanna change that to?
Well, I don't know.
I, you wanna.
You know, if, if it's legal that way, I just thought.
Well, once legal and what we wanna do is two different things. I mean, it might be legal, but that may not be what the council wants to do. So we can, okay, quitclaim deed and why don't you, or we have, Donnie's gonna talk to Sean anyway. Why don't you have him ask that question also?
So are we gonna put them on there?
Well, you can't prove it without making the stipulation in our motion.
Right, because you're gonna make that stipulation in the motion. But she's gonna say on here that she wants it to be, you know, that it can only be used for a maintenance facility. Is that what you're wanting it to say?
Yeah, I think that would be.
So she's wanting to take out some wording.
What is the wording?
This one here.
It makes all kinds of sense to me.
Well, it says for highway maintenance facility.
For the use of said tracks.
Yeah, so, so it says for highway maintenance facility already in there.
Right. Utility on.
All right, it's whatever y'all want.
So the only, the only one I'm concerned about is any, anything from this point forward would remain with the city too.
Okay, so if you wanna make the.
I'll make a move.
Any improvements, what'd you say?
I'll make a motion that we accept this quitclaim deed with one stipulation, that it includes any improvements from this point forward.
Any and all improvements?
Any and all improvements from this point forward.
A second time. We have a motion. If we have a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Donnie.
Yes.
Rhonda.
Yes.
Uh, Gina.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yes.
Donnie, you getting him right away on that?
Mm-hmm.
So when do I get that? Item number nine, reject hosting an Easter egg hunt in Harper Park on March twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen.
We've done this for several, several years. Just wanted to bring this to the council's attention. But that is the date. If it is a rain date, it would be the following Saturday.
So the town of Tallahena's gonna host it and all the like?
The library's hosting it. They usually do like a co-sponsorship on there. But the library, the library staff is the one that's handling everything. They do a great job for us. We're basically providing the facility.
So we'll be.
And the rain date is the first, second, third, fourth?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to host the Easter egg hunt in Harper Park on second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Vote.
Donnie.
Yes.
Rhonda.
Yes.
Gina.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yes.
Item number ten, approve reject purchasing Easter egg hunt candy.
The library's done a great job of recycling the eggs for years and years. We typically bought the eggs and they, we filled them up. And we have typically bought two thousand Easter eggs filled and then bought another thousand eggs empty. And the community provided the candy for that. Um, for the last three, if not four years, we've recycled our eggs. We've asked the families to donate back in. So they have not had to ask me for eggs for a long time. They have filled what eggs they have with candy from the community and they have a thousand eggs. And it usually takes at least two thousand, if not twenty-five hundred eggs. So what I would like to ask the council to do is to approve purchasing a thousand filled eggs. The cost is a hundred and twenty dollars. We did not do this for the past two years because of budget cuts.
Hundred and twenty?
A hundred and twenty dollars is what the cost.
I'll donate twenty personally. And I bet we can get some other people to donate.
Community's been donating quite a bit to it. They have about sixty dollars now, but they would prefer to use that as, as Easter baskets.
I know it sounds countless, but if we're behind seventy-something thousand dollars, you ask how we cut spending and this is one way.
I don't know, like, somebody to where that goes?
And, and.
I've got seven bucks. I could even tell you about one.
I'm hungry.
All right, is it okay?
So we're gonna do a donation?
I don't care. Is it all right if I run it through the city and we donate the money to the city and just?
I don't think, no, no.
You want, who do you want to get the money to?
Well, the library sponsoring, the library needs to do it.
So basically, the account, we're not gonna approve the hundred and twenty dollars, but we're gonna try to get enough donations for the library to take care of that lot.
Okay, the account is set up in the city's name. So I'll check to see if they will build it to the library or anything else. It's a company I've used for several years.
So what you're saying is you might be getting a better deal because it's going through the city? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure. I've just always built it through the city. I'm not sure. But the library, we have to zip it off, correct?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So it would probably be the same.
I think if we get, not that.
I, I think we can get donations.
But, you know, if we can get those donations, it's better.
How quickly do you need the donations? Did y'all run off now?
Yeah, give me your twenty bucks tonight and I'll turn it, I'll talk about calling tomorrow. So he gets them out in about a week's time and the event is, um.
I'm sure the Nazarens can donate a little bit, the Methodist can donate a little bit, and the Catholics can donate a little bit.
We might come out more than a hundred and twenty dollars.
Um, they're really cheap. I bought some personally to donate at, um, uh, da-da-da Walmart and this was cheaper than it was at Walmart.
Okay.
In here, 'cause this is a hundred and twenty or ten cents each.
Are you, are you okay?
That's pretty cheap.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
That's fine, I just wanna help them out because we typically sponsor this a lot and I don't wanna have them do that. So yeah, everybody give me your money tonight and I'll turn it over to Lee and we'll get these ordered tomorrow.
We definitely don't wanna get them. Okay, so, thanks Rhonda for that. Item number, item number ten, we have no action. Item number eleven, discussion action regarding the Faulkner Building at three oh eight Dallas Street, block sixty, lots four, five, and six. I see you've done, done quite a bit more work on it. How's, how quick are we to remove the barricades?
Depending on this rain and weather. I didn't, I didn't expect we'd have the coldest winter we've had in twenty-five years in February.
What, what else do we need to do to the?
Well, if you, if you look on that one side, you can see where I've got the brick down to the level of the other building. I need to go back on that side another ten feet or so on that to that point, which will take another two or three days for good weather. And then I go to the other side and do the same on that side. And then I need an engineer to come in and certify that it's safe and then OSHA to release it. So I'm figuring, if we get some decent weather, I'm supposed to have some after tomorrow for the rest of the week. I'm looking at probably two, two weeks and then another week for the paperwork.
What is, tell me what your concerns are as far as keeping that parking barricaded? What are your concerns at this point? Because you've got the top down and that's what we were worried about.
It's the sidewalls, it's the side brick walls. 'Cause they can still come down on that front section.
So you're afraid if it comes down?
It'll, it'll still do the same thing if those brick come down on those sidewalls. And I've gotta get them back about sixteen, eighteen feet back so if those other ones come down, it doesn't affect the front. It just affects the, the inside or.
I know, I know you're working on it, but we really, really need to do what we need to do.
What is, what is the requirement with OSHA and how far out those barricades have to be?
Well, by, I think by code, they've gotta be one and a half times the height of the building.
Well, you can't.
'Cause I called and asked and they do not have that.
Yeah, I was told when I went, when I consulted, after all this started, I consulted with the demolition crews and the safety people, uh, as per OSHA specs. And it was supposed to be one and a half times the height of the building, which in reality would've shut down the street and blocked off almost Pam's door and almost around us. And so we thought we've done good, trying to make it as inconvenient as possible for everybody. That's why I tried to do it at night when it wasn't affecting anybody, when businesses were closed, trying to do it where it wouldn't affect anybody's business with the noise. Trying to do it where it's at least painful for everybody. And, and I'm, I agree with you. We need to get it down and get it done, but I can't control the weather.
Well, we just need to somehow do whatever we need to do to where we can remove the barricades.
Well, I think within three weeks, uh, we can, we can have it where, well, within two weeks, I can have it with engineers and can come in.
Safety's the main concern. I do know the weather did work against you because I told you this meeting is gonna be pushing you again, but I do know that it worked against you.
I never, I never expected as much snow and everything else.
There's times you have to bundle up and just work through it. We built a greenhouse in some big snow because we had to get through it. And there's times you can work on it too. Is it not that we can move those barricades during the day and move it back out when you're working the building?
No, no, you can't do that.
I don't think he's saying that when he works on it.
You open this, well, that's part of it too, but you open the city to liability. If something happened, the city will get sued.
I mean, it does affect the business down there.
Well, so does, the medical place parking their van in there all weekend long and nobody can park.
And they park it around back and they get bucked by telling them to move, it's blocking the line.
Let's just all work together to get that.
I think, I think within three weeks, we can have the barricades down.
I'm gonna stick on the agenda every time that you would.
That's fine, that's fine. But I think in three weeks, we can, we can have it down.
I mean, I know at first we're gonna do this, but.
Well, we still have to until it's deemed safe by an engineer.
Well, actually, the state of Oklahoma said that the city, if they wanted to, would go move those barricades because it was up to the city, but I don't think that's what the city wants to do.
Well, that's, that, the states say, the State Department of Transportation's saying that, not OSHA. And they're saying because they only maintain the street part and the city maintains outside the street part, so it's up to you.
The name and the person that came down on it for OSHA.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if you leave that.
Now, now, I'm gonna say this. Do you want to do that?
Well, I didn't say we were going to.
Well, I'm not saying that because.
I've talked to her several.
As a city, we've got issues.
I've talked to her about it several times, she's called me.
Okay.
But I don't have her contact information. But I don't have her contact information. I take that back, she didn't call me, I met her down here, and she called. So, the thing is.
Yeah, we, we can do that, but I think within three weeks we can have them down.
Okay.
Barring unforeseen rain and snow.
Are you gonna tell Pam this?
Yeah, Pam wants to come by, we can talk to Pam about some of the things she's doing.
Well, we just need to do what we need to do.
That's my point, I'm not trying to sit here to argue, I'm trying to say we're doing everything possible to get the situation taken care of at the least inconvenience to everybody.
That's pretty fair. You and I both know that it's taken a long time and we know why, but let's try to move it on as quick as we can, so. Okay, I'll have that back on for the next question. Can you stand up please? I'm sorry.
If someone had not called OSHA in on him, it would've all been done.
You're right, and, you know, that would've been a perfect scenario, but we don't have any control of who sees what on Main Street.
I know, I understand, but he had to work that, he had to do it by himself, he can't even get anybody helping.
Well, you can, but it costs a lot of money.
Yeah.
He can, he can hire someone, I mean, he could've hired someone right off and it could've already been downed, it would've just cost him a lot of money.
We, we did hire somebody.
Did you?
Yes, that was legal to do it, and we stopped on that point because we were concerned about safety, because he was going it down with the track hoe, and I didn't want to take the risk of it damaging other properties in the street and everything else, so we stopped him at the very front, the hand to the front to try to be safe, and so.
And I think that's OSHA's main concern, is they just wanted you to.
That was OSHA's main thing.
They just wanted you to hire people that were licensed, bonded.
No, they wanted it done safe.
And experienced.
You know.
Now, being an engineering technician myself, the more you talk to OSHA, the worse things get.
We, we haven't talked to OSHA, they've talked to us.
Yeah, well, the more they get involved, the worse it gets. I've gone through that many.
Well, sure, because they have a job to do. And like Donnie said, if you bring them in too much, no telling what they're gonna bring up. So we don't wanna have to do that, we need to know who you're contacting.
I work for the city of Wichita and county of Wichita, Centwood County, and the Air Force out to McConnell, and every time OSHA gets involved in anything, it gets worse.
This is now on the subject, by the way, who bought that building?
Uh, I don't know if I'm allowed to tell you or not, but, um, how about barbecue?
We're gonna, Donnie, we're gonna move on with that, and please, um.
I think within three weeks we can move the barricades out.
Let us know if there's anything we can do to help, help speed that up.
Pray for good weather.
We can do that.
Good weather and good health.
Okay, item number tw- uh, did you need anything else on that one that you did?
No.
Okay. Item number twelve, discussion action regarding the street parking adjacent to the Faulkner Building at three oh eight Dallas, lots sixty, lots four, five, and six, that was the same conversation we just had, so, um, we're, have no action on that. Item number thirteen, discussion action regarding citywide cleanup event. We've been in contact with the trash service, and we were looking at maybe April the twenty-fifth, would that be a good time for the council to have a citywide cleanup? The trash company will come and they'll bring the roll-offs, but they're not gonna go nowhere to go pick up trash.
No, no.
But.
I think that'd be a good day.
Needs to be organized.
Usually you and I.
Needs to be an organized event.
That's a Saturday, right?
We need to advertise it, we need to start advertising now, get people involved, clean up downtown, clean up bitches. And also, if there's anybody that may know someone that may volunteer to go pick some things up and bring it down, or, and put it in the roll-offs, if there's people that can't, or, you know, retired, older people, or people just without transportation, um, we might think about that, 'cause that'd be a good thing.
I haven't seen a box, a lot of times it gets put in my box, and it hasn't so far about the state of our trash all day, have you, any of you guys?
There is one, because Wilberton, Latimer County has it in the newspaper, so I haven't seen that particular letter, but there must be one out there.
I got one at, uh, the Technology Center.
I'll go on their website and see if we can't get their posters and things.
Who would like to, um, see about advertising this event? Everybody wants to volunteer to do that, or do you just want us to? If, if we're okay with that, they, no?
How big do we wanna do it?
Gina will do it, thank you.
I'll help you with it.
Well, just get some advertising out there, put something, you know, in the newspaper about it.
I'll see if you have posters from the state, if you wanna do.
Yeah.
I'll see if I still have one.
Yes, Mary. Which one have you volunteered?
Okay, I've actually been working with a garbage company to get all the parameters for when we promote it, so what's acceptable, what's not.
Okay.
As well as the services that are available from week to week that are already included in the price that our customers pay that I wasn't even aware of.
Yeah.
Apparently we have the constant, um, curbside bulk service, so I have all of that documented, and I'll get with you on it.
Okay, I know they can't do tires.
Tires or refrigerators. Right, but we've got the whole list, I've got it written for you.
Thank you.
And I've got any.
So we can get those state trash off bags, garbage bags with you.
We can just get a lot of participants, that would be really good, we could do a lot of good that day. So can we have a motion to ha- to host that on April twenty-fifth?
I make a motion to host.
We have a motion, a second, any more discussion?
Uh, Donnie?
Yes.
Rhonda? Yes. Gina?
Yes. Item number fourteen, discussion action regarding lot cleanup. There is no lot cleanup information available due to Gina's medical leave. Um, could not locate any of the information that was given to her to work on from the last meeting. I did try to contact her by phone, I haven't been able to, I can't leave a message, I have text, and she hasn't responded.
Try Facebook.
Um, and I've also had Mary trying to contact her, we've had no contact, and so we really tried hard to get that tonight, and we've really, we really have to do some lot cleanup. So, we've got those things, we haven't received anything back in the mail where anyone has picked up any certified mail, so I'm assuming at this point that she didn't get those things done before she left on medical leave.
At what time we do make contact with her, or are we requiring that the laptop come back and all?
I wasn't, I wasn't aware that, I don't know of any city records that, unless she has this stuff. The only thing I know she has is a laptop, and I think she took that because she thought that she may be able to do some work from home, but we haven't been able to reach her to.
Was that donated?
It was donated to the city, yes.
On the home health?
Yes, but it wasn't donated to her personally, it was donated to the city. And you could say that, you know, there may be records and information in that laptop, should be, that we should be able to have access to it for the right.
Well, we need, we need a policy, we need a policy on, on that particular item because, but we do have other people with personal, with city property at home, uh, the computer for the water plant goes home, um.
And they're on active duty too, this is a, a policy.
We definitely need to know our equipment.
Right, we definitely need to know, but we need actually.
We didn't know that until we entered the office today. But anyway, wanted to let you know when we're out on that, and I did get something, I'm not gonna get just a second. I did get something on, uh, her medical leave, and she did say she'd be back April the sixth, so we're looking forward to that, maybe we'll get back on, on track this month.
Um, I just wanted to let you know that the property at Church and Helen that gets so many complaints in here is owned by a different person, has been for the past several months, Mr. Doug Black, I don't know who he is, but apparently he might be familiar to you all, I'm just passing along.
What piece of property are you talking about on Church and Helen?
The one with the wraparound porch that everybody's always complaining about, I think.
Oh.
So Dudley Black, um, bought this?
Oh, Dudley?
I think so.
Gotcha. Well, thank you for that, thank you for that information.
Thank you very much.
That must be a fairly new development.
Six months ago.
Hmm.
He's fine with all kinds of things.
We should know.
What'd you say the address was on the?
Church of Helen.
It's face office, it's the property we're talking about. We need to find out about the property next door to that too, that's, we need to. Item number fif- pardon me?
I think she has that still.
Still? Item number fifteen, new business.
I have something for the fire department, because Brian sent me this agenda item and it did not, I did not get it on here. Um, he has a firefighter that he needs to get added on, Josh Johns. Can I, I'd like to make a motion to do that at this time, if I can.
Sure, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second? Any more discussion?
Do we have, we have an application on him?
Yeah, yeah, we approved him at our paperwork meeting.
You've got an app?
No.
Are you, you want, you wanna take over the fire department since?
Uh, it doesn't matter to me, I'm just easier to find, I believe.
Do you have an application with you?
It's at station.
I know Josh Johns.
We don't usually see him.
There's not, yeah. He's a, I imagine.
You wanna make an exception without the application, do people know who that is?
You know Josh Johns.
Donnie, do you know him?
Nope.
Do you feel comfortable about making any kind, you don't know him?
Don't know him at all, don't know him from the hillabines.
Why?
So it'd be kinda hard for you to vote on him?
Mm-hmm.
Which I understand that, but we have, we have a motion on the floor and a second, so let's move on with that, we have a motion, a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Donnie?
No.
Rhonda? Yes. Gina?
Yes.
And Jackie?
Yes. And one new business?
Yes, uh, Dale and I have been talking a little bit, Dale, you wanna go ahead and present this?
Sure. I think, uh, the council, I think, uh, we've been talking about the airport improvement, I think everybody understands that there's four hundred and fifty, fifty thousand that's in the account, if we don't spend it.
Do you mean we were talking about it because we didn't sign the money over the last year, 'cause I haven't had any correspondence with it?
No, I've, I've been doing that since I'm over the airport, and, and what this is, is the FAA.
I was gonna say, 'cause I'm not familiar with it.
What, we, the city's released it every year for ten years.
Right, right.
And eleven years, and.
Dale didn't, didn't work on it, that's what I was saying.
And, uh, and, and I brought it up last year to the council, and we applied for a grant through this, with this money to do the AOP. Okay, so we lost that, and you remember signing, voting to give our hundred and fifty to Stigler?
Right.
Okay, we still have four hundred and fifty in the account to improve the airport, and if we don't use it, we lose it, and we won't be getting any more, this is the last money that'll be available at Tallahena to upgrade the airport to this extent. And Dale, uh, and we've been working to try to get everything worked out, to try to utilize this FAA money that's set aside in our name.
And I think that's correct, my question is, how are we going to make it secure to where they can't go down with sticks and break all the?
That's, that's what we're working on.
Yeah.
That's what all this does, is just get us to the point where we're secure, we've got a safe airport, and, and without cost to the city.
'Cause there's been a lot of vandalism out there.
Before we go any further with it, is there, will there be no cost to the city?
Right, I'm, I'm, there, there's a thirty-eight thousand dollar match for three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, and I've been speaking with the tribe, and the tribe is, uh, will probably match this.
Like you talked to them before?
Mm-hmm, they matched before, and so it won't, we will, we can't do it if there's a match from the city, 'cause we just don't have the money.
Right, which you, you think they have before.
Right, right, and that's what we did before.
And you got the letter from them, saying so.
Right, got the letter from them.
Okay, so you just wanna tell us about it?
And so that's what, that's what we're doing here, is trying to get everything secure to utilize this money, so we don't lose it, and can make improvements for the town of Tallahena without a cost to the city. Dale, you can go ahead and finish your presentation.
We just looked, looked at the airport, and, uh, there's actually a report now about ten years ago, said that the, that the runway needed to be re-refurbished, so basically that's what this is.
Yeah.
Okay, we're talking about refurbishing the, the asphalt, filling in the cracks. I put some pictures in there that, that, that we took at the airport a week ago, uh, so you can see the condition of it. Uh, there's some standing water out there, we've got some, some money in there to try to improve the, the drainage also. Uh, we talked to, uh, the FAA, FAA, to make sure they're, they're on, on board with this, so that's, that's kinda where we are. Uh, put a, a project to- together, it doesn't spend all the money, okay, but, you know, we figured we, uh, done what needed to be done at a certain time, and that is to fix, fix the runway.
Yeah, this leaves us a hundred and seven thousand dollars, uh, of money, and, uh, we can utilize to do some other things after we get this done, uh, but this, this will put us in good shape for probably twenty years.
As far as the runway goes.
As far as the runway goes.
As, as far as the, the security, huh?
Yeah.
'Cause I remember when we did, um, the engineering fees and everything like that, will it come out of the, the grant money here?
The grant and match, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's all included.
All included.
What is asphalt rejuvenator?
That's, that's, that's what they put on runways to rejuvenate them.
Is it an overlay, man, are we getting more asphalt down?
It's not an overlay, it's more of a.
'Cause I was thinking, the report was saying that it needed to have so many inches more of asphalt to down.
No, I, I haven't seen that in any of the reports that I got.
I'm going on memory what I met with a man several, several years ago. So it's just resurfacing or recoating what asphalt is out there?
Recode, yeah, you go out there and you seal the cracks, as you can see, you've got some neat cracks out there, we've got grass growing in some places. So you basically gotta seal the cracks first, you gotta remove the faint that's currently out there, reseal it, if you will, I know it's more than that, it's just not, not a reseal.
A hundred and forty-two thousand dollars just to coat it.
It's, it's a special product, it's, yeah.
So what are you asking for tonight, though?
We, we just wanna proceed and, and, uh, get the commitment from the tribe, and, and bring the commitment letter back from them, that they'll match it and, and move forward and try to get this.
And so, until you get that commitment letter back from the tribe, we're not gonna do anything right.
Oh, no, no.
So you just want permission to go to the tribe and ask for the commitment letter again, and I'm finally about to count it down.
Uh, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
One of the things with the experience on that runway is that, uh, the slurry seal, we lost the runway once before, because the cracks allow moisture to get in, moisture goes under it, and then it upheaves everything and tears up the base also, and this is critically important if our airport's gonna live for another twenty years, I'm surprised it's made it as far as it has, but this is something we really wanna pursue if we wanna keep our airport. And this slur, this is, I call it slurry seal, I don't know if that's technically what they call it, but with aviation, they cover the whole thing, so they fill all the cracks so moisture can't get down into the base, and that's pretty important stuff.
Have you been up lately? Do you have to be on it?
Yes, 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 I, I, I keep an eye on it, uh, a lot, but it's in good shape, but it does need this treatment, or we can go downhill in two years' time, and that.
Thanks, Brad. Donnie, can I ask one, if the tribe are interested in helping us with this match, I mean, the day.
'Cause they utilize it.
They can use it, and they, they do now.
Yes, they do now, they fly in doctors, they do big swing ambulance.
At one time, they came to the council and, and talked about maybe purchasing that airport, so I thought maybe when we get all these improvements and things done, maybe that was one that were working.
No, in my, in my discussions, they're not interested in purchase, but they're interested in helping us get it in shape.
And anytime you can kinda let us know about things like this, if you need any help from anyone, appreciate you doing the legwork on it, and the council's fine with moving forward, we're trying to get something, I think we just didn't know about it, so it was kinda surprising.
I thought I told you about it.
You did, tell us about it, it's been so long ago.
Well, but that was the last money we lost. That was the last money.
No, because I talked, I talked about you when I made the phone call with FAA and, and.
You talked about me?
And, and FAA, and OAC about the fact that they wanted us to forfeit the three hundred, all of it that we had banked, I talked that to you.
Well, we appreciate you working on that.
And that we wanted to utilize what we had left and, and not give it back, and then.
We appreciate you working on that. So anything else, or you?
And we can move forward.
Okay, please, Dale. Yes, sir?
I wanna bring something up that you should've brought up, the fire code in Tallahena has gone from a ten to a, I mean, an eight to a five.
We're not having had time to do that.
'Cause Brian, Brian's here, and we were gonna get some shout-outs.
But that's a good, that's a good thing, yes. We're having to do it under new business, 'cause it, it didn't get on the agenda, and Brian, if you have time, do you wanna talk to us a little bit about that, or do you want Gina to, or Donnie, whoever, to talk about that?
You can.
I can talk about that, okay?[1498.82]